Okay, everyone, this is Tuesday, October 14th. This is the meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. Our call this meeting to order. And a motion to approve the minutes on the September 23rd, 2014 regular meeting.
So moved.
By here.
Second.
By Lisa to do the discussion. Do you know, all over the paper? Anything else that we can discuss? We have an opportunity for public comment. Is there any public that would like to make a comment at this time?
Hi, my name is Cara Wyer. I was here a couple meetings, four or five meetings ago and just asked a follow-up question about board communications if apparent concerns were raised, how and when would they get the information in order to understand any follow-up from the board? I was told that there was a presentation by Marvin Preps. I was able to find the curriculum committee meeting minutes, but wasn't able to find a presentation. So if somebody could point me in the right direction, that would be great because I heard they gave a lot more information with just simply minutes.
We'll email that to you as an attachment to the presentation, in PowerPoint.
Okay. I just, I wasn't able to.
It should be on YouTube, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I looked, so I didn't find it.
Not to take any time from your comments, but just so everybody knows, we've been having some problems this September getting those YouTube things posted. And they're posted up through the August meeting. They've been recorded as soon as we, when Steve can talk to us about that a little bit later in the meeting. As soon as we are able to upload it, then you can hear the whole board meeting conversation at YouTube.
If I leave my contact information, somebody will get me the link to that. And then I just wanted to know if there's any holes in my understanding, who might I direct any questions about, once I do, once I am able to give the presentation?
I would suggest contacting Mr. Preps directly.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. Move on to board committee reports. We have several this evening. First is the Arts Committee.
Hi, I did those, so, and since we have a lot of committee reports, I'll try to do it quickly. So as you can see in your minutes, we discussed the lunch program. The lunch program, including the agreement, discussing the agreement we will have in agenda for tonight between Art District and Red Hook for the school lunch director. We talked about, you know, needing participation levels to increase as a key variable in the program's success this year, although as we've talked about, we've already, we're already seeing some savings because of labor class and using USDA foods. We discussed marketing the program, and we discussed school bucks, the online credit payment option, which it should be noted can also be used for other school-related payments, and money left over on accounts at the end of the year will be refunded. Those are important points. We discussed the technology project funding, which we discussed at our last meeting as well. And we also discussed some budget issues that are sort of, you know, as kind of a preliminary conversation before we actually delved into the budget after we get the rollover budget from, you know, as we begin the budget process. But a couple of things that people should be alerted to are that there's no D-HIC holiday this year, so we're not seeing any savings in health insurance. We are seeing an increase in our special education budget this year, so we don't, Tom expects that we will use all of that budget. You will recall that we tightened up the budget, using more of our revenues to have a closer match between budgeting and revenues, and that may have an impact on kind of how much our fund balances. And so going forward, how much wiggle room we might have, I think, you know, there are a lot of different issues to consider as we go forward. So Tom was expressing some concerns about whether expenditures might actually exceed revenues this year, what impact that may have. But these are, so these are some things that we have to be conscious of. Obviously, as the budget unfolds month-to-month, you know, we'll be in a better position to understand where we are. And we have the budget calendar, we also discussed, and so we'll talk about that later as that process begins. It was useful to start earlier last year than we have in previous years, so we're going to continue that. And we also discussed what we can talk about later, sort of when the actual budget vote is scheduled for, when we have to vote, and it's not a meeting that we are scheduled to meet, that day is not a date that we're scheduled to meet, but we can, when we look at the budget calendar, we can talk about that and just alert people ahead of time to the days that are available and will be available to us to take our actual vote on the budget. But that's a long way off the table. We were going to meet today, but we did not. We postponed it to next week, my audit and finance. So the finance is Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Tom, can you give us a little more information about the concerns that you have about expenditures exceeding revenues this year?
Well, I think after the, I, we've been running along the past couple of years of our expenditures and revenues pretty much matching up with each other during this budget process this past year to use, to start using more of the fund balance, to start drawing that down a bit. You know, some things were put into play that were going to have that effect. First of all, we took a lot of, some monies that were budgeted completely in the general fund. These are some teachers and teaching assistants that are in the federal funds. We took money out of the general fund because we knew the federal fund was going to be paying for some of these people. So that immediately took money, you know, potentially money out of, or it's an expenditure that wasn't going to be seen before, but the budget isn't there to support anything else. So that's one factor. What Deirdre mentioned though is there's no D-HIC holiday. That's about $200,000. It's budgeted for, it's fine, but it's an expense, we're seeing 12 months of expenses instead of 11 months. And then after the budget was all approved, and even after it was adopted, we've had quite a few special ed students move into this school district, and that's putting a hurt on us. We're not fully budgeted on that yet.
So if I understand you correctly, you're expecting expenditures in the special education area to exceed the budget line for this year?
It's going to be real, real close. And typically, there's a lot of space there, and there's going to be no space this year.
And what other areas do you expect to exceed?
Well, those are the big ones. Those are the big ones. I think the other area that we don't know yet, we've seen some good news so far in that we're seeing fuel oil prices going down. We just haven't hit the winter to find out if we're going to use more or not. I think we've done really well on electrical side. Our costs have been coming down a bit. I think Sheldon's done a good job tightening things up so that we're not wasting electricity, so that's helped out a lot, too.
Thank you. I think, you know, just to, this seems like an appropriate time to just share, obviously, I'm sure, you know, we're all concerned about this, but we did talk about trying to, you know, decrease that margin between what we budgeted for and our revenues. And I'm concerned that already we're seeing what the problem can be with doing that. You know, we have the facilities minutes, I think, one of the hot water heaters is broken and needs to be replaced, so, you know, things come up for our special education students. I think very quickly, we might be learning some of the downside to playing with that margin, which we'll be setting, we'll have to consider as we move forward.
Okay. Any other questions?
Guess it's my night. I don't know if now is the appropriate time to ask, or when we get to the facilities report, but I would like to have at least some update on the wireless project and, you know, how the progress is and the way the thing came together.
Okay. We're going to discuss that in Communications.
Okay. Great.
Then I'd ask Steve to be here, so.
I see that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Claire? All right. So we'll move on to the Arts Committee.
I wrote it, so let me report, and I welcome any of you that want to join in here. As it turns out, my colleagues will testify that it took me a while to get it to them, and as it turns out, if I'd waited even longer, it might have been even more accurate. As you go down, the activities audit process is still going on. There has been a change in personnel that isn't reflected in the minutes here, but we have information relative to that tonight that's going on, and Tom tells us it's going smoothly. The most important thing, of course, is the external audit. And we were hoping that we would be able to meet actually today to receive that external audit. It turns out that the final pieces of that audit weren't actually put together until the end of last week, so it wasn't possible. So we have a plan now to meet next Wednesday where we will receive the audit. We're hoping that we'll receive copies of it beforehand.
Yep.
So that we're not trying to digest.
You're not reading it while you're there, right.
We're on the spot. That's a very, as you all already understand, that's a very important piece of the financial well-being of this district. And as Tom has said, it allows us, once it's done and it's accepted, it will allow us to close the books on the previous year. So hopefully, we'll then be able to bring it to the board, our next meeting, which would be on the 28th. That would be our plan. We continue to look into the possibility of including a community member on the Audit Committee. We're trying to find out if other districts nearby have already done that and how they did that, so it was not to reinvent the wheel, as it were, and those kind of things. I think, I've already found out that the rest of this board is already way ahead of me all the time, but I've been chunking at it, and I have found that there are districts, at least in the capital district, where they have done it, and have online some of the application process, which I have copied and I'll give to ladies here, which may be helpful. It's not the process they went through, but it is that there are existing applications so that we can see what was called for. So that's in progress. And the cafeteria program, as Deirdre has just already reported to you, is ongoing. It seems to be going smoothly. And from the standpoint of the Audit Committee, there's lots for us to try to find out as we get reports in the future.
Questions for the other committees?
Those are mine. I have some brief report. Most of the time was spent talking about some ongoing contract negotiations with the anti-unit and some upcoming contract negotiations that'll happen in the spring with the administrators. Our next meeting, we're really going to focus on the, our current tenure recommendation process. We're going to look at that to see if we need to make changes because of the new APPR system that we use.
Okay. Questions for Claire?
Your second topic under "to be discussed" is about the APPR agreement. Is there information about changing that moving forward?
We're going to be talking about that because it's possible to make changes to that, so we didn't really even get into that yet. That's, it's going to go forward, so. Joe's worked on that a little bit, but.
Thanks.
Any questions?
Yeah, so isn't there, I, just to follow up on that question, I think, Joe, you've been meeting last year, right, with the group?
We've had several meetings with the RTA.
Teachers are to talk about, sort of, the refining of APPR. So that's ongoing, is that sort of?
That's right. And I, as it stands right now, I don't, we decided to let some of the things in play play out before, and we discussed some possible changes, but I think both parties are inclined to wait until next year's APPR cycle before we make any significant changes. But we continue to meet occasionally and have those discussions, but I don't see us doing anything very different, if at all, for the 14, 15 cycle.
The things in play being, you mean at state level?
No, I, well, that too, but that's a whole other, that's a whole other conversation. But I just mean how, you know, as we continue to work through our process and refine our process without changing the plan itself, but.
Right.
As we learn from doing, and we're all, we're all still in a learning mode on that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. You want the curriculum?
Those are mine. In the spirit of trying to keep it brief, there's a lot here. We talked at length with Mr. Preps about the curriculum development work that happened over the summer. And it's important to know that in developing Rhinebeck's curriculum documents, we did not wholesale adopt Engage New York's modules, and it's important for the community to know that. And over the past 10 or 15 years, the district worked to develop unit plans that allow for fluctuation in curriculum development so that they don't have to complete the right every time. That being said, this summer, there was a tremendous amount of work done, and Chancellor, the curriculum documents that have been developed over the summer and last summer are written specifically for Rhinebeck as appropriate for Rhinebeck students, not just what Engage New York tells us that we need to do. The goal has been to create flexibility in the structure while allowing for personal teaching styles to come through in each classroom, but being mindful that too much flexibility can produce inconsistency in instruction, so we're trying to avoid that wherever possible. The teachers were excited that they were able to present their plans to their colleagues at Chancellor, and it was a nice way for them to begin to develop communities of practice and build a greater understanding of their colleagues.
Right.
And so we're hoping that mid-November, we're going to have a first run at those curriculum documents as a committee. We'll take a look at those and review them with Marvin and Joe. We've scheduled a December 1st meeting to review those, which is not our usual date. And then once we've had a chance to do that, we'll be able to bring them to the full board. At Buckley, there was a variety of approaches used for curriculum design, and many of the units are already aligned to the standards. In the high school, geometry is being developed, continuing to be developed, where algebra was redone last summer and during the school year last year. But the English department initiated a review of the high school ELA courses, 9 through 12, in light of the new ELA region exam. So the goal is to have the high school courses articulated and aligned with the new standards by the time the English Regents exam comes in 2016. They're all very excited about that, the teachers. I think they've got a consultant who's been working with them to do lots of great stuff, so.
Questions? Any questions? Deirdre?
Not so much a question, but a comment, just to underscore what Laura has said in this set of minutes from our most recent meeting, that really there is a sense that how important it will be to members of the community who've come forward and asked questions about really being able to look themselves into what's happening in the curriculum, to understand what's happening here in our school, that those documents will be made available within this school year. The goal, obviously, that's a lot of people have to come together to work toward this end, but it was very helpful for us to hear a sort of sense of how that's developing over time and what the timeline might look like.
Maria?
I just want to comment that, you know, it's good to hear that the teachers able to share their curriculum work with each other at Chancellor. You know, it's an important part of, you know, the thinking now about collaborating with colleagues, the curriculum development, and making that happen at a superintendent's office today is certainly important, so it's nice to hear that that's happening.
Okay. All right. So we'll move on to Communications.
Okay. That's me. Our, Steve, are you going to speak now about the wireless, or do you want to, is there a later point in the interview?
No, when we get to that.
When we get to that point, okay. I just was going to call you up on stage, so to speak. Well, we were very, very excited, along with our fellow committee member, Steve Jensen, to get a peek at the web redesign that's underway, that's under construction, and it was extremely helpful for us on the committee to get to give feedback. My colleague across the table had fantastically helpful commentary to share, and we learned some of the great possibilities with this new website, such as using Google Translate, perhaps, on every page, so all families in the district can access important documents and understand what's going on in the school, how to use the Twitter feed, and ask the district features of the new site, and certainly how to make the site work more effectively for teachers in terms of their very crucial work that they use the site to do. So we were very pleased to meet with Ed Schindler, who's been working alongside Steve Jensen to explore all these options, and we also very much agreed that this website really has to be responsive to all the people who use it. So consulting with teachers, consulting with the principals and administrators, and families. So we're hoping that it might be possible to get some feedback at our Coffee with the Board events later this month around exactly those issues. So it was great to get that update and also to reaffirm the principle of working with all the different constituencies who really need this to be an effective, powerful communications tool. So maybe I'll just turn over to Steve now to talk about the wireless project and update us on what's happening with the rollout in our schools.
As you know, the district put out an RFP last spring to have a wireless project, and as we received the proposals that came back, one proposal was fairly unique, and it proposed that not only that we replaced the, not only did we put in the wireless system, but we also replaced the wire. And we also had done, had an independent study done of our network, and that had also confirmed the same thing, that much of our equipment was very old and antiquated. I think the switches were up to 15 years old, and so, and the raw technology, that's an eternity. So we took that and we awarded it to a vendor who was going to replace both of those things. And we had a very aggressive timeline on that RFP. We wanted everything to be done by August 15th. And so the contractor came in, they put in the APs, I believe this one right above my head here, and one in the back, they were there to accommodate a large group so that many, many people could be in here accessing the access points, as we call them, APs. So we embarked to do this, and they were able to get the infrastructure done in a timely manner. We came into problems when it came to the setting up of the switches and setting it up in such a way that it could go through the BOCE system. We are unique compared to many businesses, and school districts are unique in many ways because many of them go through a BOCE system. And our particular case, BOCE system, has a technical arm, which is a private company called CSI. They work with the BOCEs, and they are very integral to how the systems are set up. On top of that, there's a third layer, which is Light Power, which is the ISP provider or the Internet service provider. Those factors came into play when they came into design and you actually came into cut over the system. What they found was that they had not fully understood what needed to happen, and you had to go through all those hoops with all those organizations to do what they needed to be, to accomplish what they needed to do. So, long story short, is that they didn't make the August 15th deadline. They didn't make the September 15th deadline. And so there was a lot of, a lot of, a lot of conversations happening almost on a daily basis as to what needed to happen, and so, long story short, is that we're here, and we're almost, October 15th, tomorrow, and I can say that we are up and running. The wire has always been up and running. That actually was, we were down, I believe, two days entirely doing the wired side. So the wired side, we didn't really lose any ground. We lost maybe a day or two on that. The wireless, however, was the problem. And because we had to develop new V-LANs, we didn't have a structure to, we had to build that structure. So in order to do that, that took a little bit of time. The unfortunate part was that even though, for the, in the case of the district here, we have very few spots that are wireless dependent. We have a little spot in the district office, we have a spot over in my suite, or my series of offices over at Chancellor, and we have this there, this library here, which is highly dependent on it. When we were doing the wireless, we had to keep bringing it up, testing it, bringing it down, bringing it up, disconnecting the old, bringing it on the new, testing it, then bringing it back to, which caused a lot of disruption for the library program here at the high school. They, even though we have a lot of great computers sitting here, and they were wired and they were functional, the carts that you see, one's over there and one's behind you, are there. Those are wireless device carts. They're for laptops and those kinds of things. Those were not dependable for the students to use, so caused a lot of disruption in that regard. At this point, I can tell you that we've pretty much ironed out most of those issues. There's still some refinement that we're doing. Matter of fact, today, I was loading onto each of the teachers' machines, I think I did about five or six teachers today where I got them, their laptops that they got this August, talking to the network, and downloading Office 365. So now I have some teachers that are going home now and downloading the full Office Week to their, to their home computer, and they also have it on their school computers. Because Office 365, what that does is it offers five copies for each and every staff member, five complete set, complete software sets for a particular staff member, so they could load it on an iPad, a laptop, or whatever. So they're very excited about that, so we've been actually downloading that. We also brought over the iPad cart for the STEM lab over at Chancellor, and that is communicating with the wireless as well. The wireless is stabilizing. What we're having some difficulties with right now is that we've got to get these devices to understand networks. We've got to do some configuration with some of the laptops and some of the iPads and things like that. So that's really legwork on our end that we have to iron out, and so we expect that to be fairly smooth. The other thing that we found is, is that the speed has dramatically increased as far as getting onto the Internet. I had talked, the last time I was here, about these bottlenecks. We took out a lot of the bottlenecks, and we're able to see downloads coming faster and uploads are going better. However, what we're having a hard time wrestling with right now is authentication. So I'm a student, I come in, I log in, and it's Steve Jensen, I type in my password. For the computer to recognize who I am is taking as long as it always did, and which was a very painful process for the student. That has not changed. So now we're reevaluating that, and we're bringing in CSI, again, the technical and the BOCEs, and saying, what's going on here? Because it's not the network. We have a brand-new network. So it's probably with our DC controllers, and maybe with our DHCP or the DNS software, you know, that we have. So we're beginning to look at that. But once they're on and they're logged on and they're working with it, the speed seems to be there. We have had a couple of times so far this year where we've gotten notices from BOCEs that there's been a virus attack, and so things had to be shut down, and so we blocked, like this morning we had one. And so it shut things down, and they're working on that end of it. So there are things that, you know, the first, you get to point and figure, one thing, and you know, women, it's not bad, it's happening over here in Duchess County, and all the districts are being affected by that. And so we have to sort out what is specific to Rhinebeck and what is a global or county-wide problem, so we're working on that. So it's been a long road, you know, the first month is always a month of misery, I call it, for, you know, a technology director, if you're trying to get everything back up and running. We're getting there, we're still fine-tuning the wireless, and it's, the students, you know, the response from the students has been positive as far as they can pick it up on their phone because they can log on. Now, GUESS is a network that we have on the system that we have shut down right now. So a parent coming in right now is not able to just access the Wi-Fi. And we're doing that because we want to take out as many variables as we can right now to resolve the issues of fine-tuning. And then once, once we feel like we're confident that we have taken care of all those issues, then we'll open up the GUESS network for the community at large. So it's been a long road, and, you know, the staff has been great, they've been patient. The staff here has been patient in its compromising of its program in the first month, and the CLF staff has been very patient because they have this technology, and they've been biting at the bit to use it, and now they're beginning to see that, and they're very excited about that, so I do appreciate that. I don't know if there's any questions particularly, hopefully I can easily answer them.
You did. I just, more for the viewers at home, there was a question about now that they're wireless, about students accessing information on their phones. You talked to me about this before, but if you could just tell me.
Sure. Yeah. The way that the students are able to access the wireless is through their student account. So I'm Steve Jensen, so I'm S. Jensen, and I type in my password. The same filtering that I would get if I logged on to the computer is going to apply to my phone. So it knows me, Steve Jensen has a student, so the student filter applies to me. The GUESS network is even more. The guest network is even more restrictive. It has even a higher filter than the students. And so that standard protocol, you know, in the networking world is usually the guest network is the most restrictive than students, than staff, than administration. So you usually work in that tiered structure. And then the students are able to access from there, and which coincides with what you have done as a board, which is allowing the phones to be used in the classrooms and seeing it as a tool and not a toy. And I think that's really important because more and more students are recognizing that phones being used in the classroom is actually a valuable tool. Can also be a distraction, as anything can be a distraction. But that really takes diligence and, you know, as I said before, the last presentation, tools are the right place to be wrong and this is the time to learn that stuff. And that's the time to learn how to be self-disciplined. And it's a hard -- it's hard for students to do that, you know. And I'll look across, I'll see, I'll be at a seminar where I'll see adults and they're presenting and they're, you know, texting away or, you know, we all fall, you know, prey to that. So, is that your question?
It does.
Okay.
I appreciate the difficulties that you've been operating with and the challenges in getting everything up and running and that some of this, much of it probably, has been out of the district's control. One area, though, that I wanted to ask you about is I have, and I don't think I'm the only board member in this position, but I've been approached by staff members saying that while they understand there've been issues about bringing the system online, that they feel as though the communication to them from the administration has been lacking and that that's created some frustration on their part. So I wanted to know.
Sure. What I began, when we began this process, when we began to encounter these problems, I would ask the vendor, when will this be resolved? And it would be, it would be resolved tomorrow, Steve. Great. So then I started to broadcast that. And then the problem was, it wasn't resolved tomorrow. So you end up backpedaling. And as I mentioned at the Communications Committee, I could have said something like, it's not going to be resolved till December and just put everybody off. That would not be the right thing. The problem was, we were not getting accurate information to be able to dispense. And so we wrestled with that as best we could because it was, at this point, we came to the wireless, we were totally vendor-dependent at this point and they could not give us a standard timeline. And so the only thing that we asked them to do as much as possible was, we asked them that if they were taking the system down, that it'd be done after four o'clock, that if they were doing it as much on weekends, one weekend, I believe we spent 45 hours on a weekend in here doing things, as much as we could. But even then, we still had, I think, at least two times, possibly three, where we were, the vendor, I should say, inadvertently took down the system in, you know, three o'clock. And it was not intentional, it was just something that they thought they were being helpful and it wasn't so helpful. So we didn't know what to communicate without appearing like we didn't know. But the truth of that was, we did, we didn't know, you know, and we knew that we didn't. So we tried to communicate with some people. Maybe we could have done a better job at communicating with some particular people, but certainly try to improve that going forward.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Have you, Ma'am, have you communicated with the staff and explained to them what you just explained to us so that they know why it's now October 15th and it's not happening?
Yeah, the staff I have met with, some of the staff either privately or I had the opportunity to get some back to me about some of this. I have met with every faculty, but the high school was the one that I hadn't, was not able to speak to directly about it. But on the first day of school, we were speaking to the middle school and the elementary school and let them know where we were at that point in time. And then as things progressed, we'd let people know within the building, people within the building to say, spread the word, let us know. Because some of the things we wanted to do, for instance, when I was explaining what I did today, I chose six teachers. I need to go to those six teachers. And I said, how would you like to be a Guinea pig? And, you know, they said, absolutely, we'd like to try this. And so I would, we would work through the process before I went out and said, you know, this is how we're going to do it. We want to work out the kalyats of what needs to happen. For instance, with this particular project, I need to create a sheet that each parent or each staff member takes home. Because they have one copy that stays on their school-owned computer, but four other copies are on their personal devices in their home. I'm not going to be at their home to load that onto those devices. So when we do this, I have to make sure they understand what happens here and I actually have them go through that process and then work it out that way. But yeah, we could definitely could improve that as well, to inform them, keep them updated on what's going on. They immediately understood. I will say, it was interesting the day that the wireless network went up because I didn't say anything to anybody about it and it was just interesting to see because some of the people just walked up and said, it's up, isn't it? And I would just smile, but yeah, it is. But we wanted to work out the glitches. And so it was very, it was an interesting day when that happened. And there were glitches and we still have to work some of those out. So we're still fine tuning it.
So thank you for all you've done already. And so now on, when it comes to November 15th, it's going to be all cool?
I am, nobody in this room wants that more than me.
One quick question. You mentioned about the potential virus that was being released through BOSIs. How confident are you that whatever BOSIs gets hit with, we're going to be protected from?
Yes. That actually was, that's a very good question because one of the other tech directors from another school district actually emailed us to the board and said, how, that very question, how do we know? What's the diligence? What's going to happen? The fact that the system's shutdown was actually a defense mechanism saying, we're not going to allow this virus to enter, so we're shutting down. That actually was the defense. The problem with that is that the districts don't get warning. We're saying, we need to come up with a better system than just, we're going to hunger down and not do anything. We need to be a little proactive and get out there. So how can we stay operational and still fight this virus? And we're actually waiting to hear back from BOSIs on that very question. So, and it's been one that's been attacking other districts and other BOSIs around. I can't even remember the name of it now, but PPOS, I think is what it's called. So it's a Trojan. It tries to use the equipment of the district to march on another site. It's similar to what we talked about with Windows XP and the problems with that. And I think a lot of these viruses are coming out because many school districts still have those computers. So these viruses, it makes schools particularly prone to attack like that because it's some of the aging equipment that some school districts have. And hopefully that will be a problem for us very, in the very, very near future. So we've ordered machines here to take care of some of our XP issues. We still have some legacy here as well. But as a hacker, I'd be going, oh, there's a few over Rhinebeck, might be Go March Bonn, Rhinebeck or Go March Bonn. But it really is.
Tell everybody.
But actually, we did, it's actually all through the BOSIs and doing that. And so they want to do that. Because that way you catch up to larger pool of computers. It's a constant battle out there. It really is.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I'll just say, you know, being in the IT business myself, I certainly understand, you know, how glitches come up any time you're going through the process of bringing up a new network. And so I certainly understand that there's been some issues and delays. You mentioned that there's fine tuning going on. Rick mentioned November 15th, but I'm just wondering, do you think that's realistic, that we'll have the fine tuning finished by then?
I do. I do. I think the thing that we have to look at, one of the things is, there are two issues that are there confronting us right now. One is this delay of authentication that I spoke about. You know, that's one of our big issues. But the other is that we've had a system that just grew over 15, 20 years. It just kind of grew and there was not a lot of, there is some, there's some logic and rhyme and reason to it. But really, when I looked at the system and any vendor that has come in and looked at it, it's very, very highly customized. It's not an enterprise-level system where everybody follows the same protocol, the same structure, the same rules. This was just built, you know, in its own mind as they worked on it that day and they made a decision that might have verbal effects three or four years down the road. So it's taken 15 years to build that. And this vendor had to come in and really begin to try to bring that over in 15 days. So it was very tough. That is going to be a challenge. That's going to take a while to do that. But you won't see a change, you know, the end user won't see a change. It's going to be all on the backend where all that has to be, and I call it, you know, a Gordian knot, so to speak, that we've got to un-knot and begin to put in some semblance of order and be able to do that. But that's a long-term project and we'll just do it port by port, switch by switch. We have to just bring that thing and change that. And that would be, a lot of that would be in the summer, being able to do that. So really, those are the two issues. Un-knocking this network way that it's configured and the authentication issue.
Remember how Alexander the Great dealt with the Gordian knot?
Well, Steve, I'd also want to say that I know, you know, memories can sometimes grow dim and there's not too many people on this board who've been on the board since this network was started. But we've essentially built this piecemeal over the last 20 years. In fact, this wired/wireless project that we did this summer is, I think, the first time in my 17 years here that I recall we brought any kind of vendor in to do a huge piece of work. We basically cobbled it together ourselves with some help from CSI and BOSIs over a long period of time. So it shouldn't be a surprise to anybody that what we have today is a mishmash of stuff because that's how it was built, to save money. So now, you know, now after 17, 20 years, we try to do a big project and that mishmash is catching up with us. We could have spent a lot of money to build a network in one fell swoop from the ground up 15 or 20 years ago, but it would have been a huge investment. And I'm not saying it wouldn't have been a wise investment, but when you don't have the money, you do as much as you can. There once was a time, not too long ago, we were using a homegrown twisted pair to give Chancellor Internet access. So I just want everybody to kind of remember that there's a reason we are where we are today and it was primarily saving the taxpayers a huge financial outlay to build a system from scratch. So now we're dealing with the aftermath of that.
And the goal will be to, whatever we do, do not that. Not is that we do without disrupting the program and that's the primary goal.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very much appreciated.
Thanks, Steve.
Well, I'll just try very quickly to condense the only other points that probably deserve to be made over again, which is that we, in keeping with our goal, one of our goals for the board being communications, we're going to have the first of our Coffee with the Board events on October 23rd. That'll take place from 9:00 to 10:00 in Chancellor in the morning for folks who want to come by and chat with us there. And from 7:30 to 8:30 in the evening at the high school and middle school, members of the board will be here eager to speak with community members, families, whoever wants to come see us. We also began to talk about how we are going to build into our work together as a board opportunities for recognizing accomplishments in the district by teachers, by administrators, by students. And we, that's definitely at the top of our agenda for business moving forward.
Yes, I just want to just also highlight that the superintendent is tweeting on behalf of the district.
Yes.
Follow. Should follow. What's the, what's the Rhinebeck?
Rhinebeck CSD.
CSD, right? Okay. And that we did have a conversation about the PTSO. We're interested in helping to reinforce, like getting people to follow, follow Joe and also themselves, they're tweeting the PTSO, so kind of reinforcing important information as well as information highlighting achievements in the school district, so.
And PTSO's having a meeting tomorrow night, so presumably.
Yeah, their general membership meeting is tomorrow.
Presumably one of us will be there to continue that process of communication.
I was just going to tweet my comments in.
Touche. I should add too that Rhinebeck Athletics has a.
Right. Yes, yes, yes.
Between sports scores and things like that. People are interested in that, right? Follow, RBK Athletics, I believe.
Right. Very good.
Okay. Next. Facilities.
Yeah, I did those. So we covered a number of topics and I will try to keep my remarks as short as I can. The building use fees, there's a schedule that is up for approval this evening. It's Agenda Item 6.12, which lays out what the proposed revision to the building use fees is. If we prove it tonight, that will take effect as of tomorrow. The minutes discuss a couple of areas that were changes over previous practice, particularly the charging for the use of the parking lot and some more minor things about issues relating to use of the auditorium and the auditorium equipment. The wireless project update, you heard already, so I won't say anything more about that. The item three, we are awaiting the results of the Duchess BOSIs RFP for Architectural and Engineering Services for Building Condition Surveys. And when we get those, or when the district gets those, then we'll look at them. We'll decide if we want to invite anybody else to apply to us to do that work. And eventually, down the road somewhere, we'll make a recommendation to the board as to what firm to engage for that work. Very likely that firm will also be used to assist us in the anticipated capital project. And on that note, we had a discussion about the process of doing a capital project referendum. It's been a while since the district did one. And the committee is going to be, at its next meeting, I assume, hearing more about that process from Tom and Sheldon. And hopefully we'll also have a better sense of what the timeline is going to be for that because if we want to do it by a certain date or a certain year, we will have to have our ducks in a row before that. So we're eager to hear more about that. And then the hot water heaters that we alluded to, the hot water heater that was alluded to earlier needs to be replaced. The $40,000 number is the initial projection, but Sheldon is certain that we will get a good replacement for less than that, which is great. And the funding, the reserve fund issue that Sheldon also raised is something that we think that the Finance Committee should probably take up first before anything more is done with that.
Diane?
I have a question about the dollar charge for parking. Is this anticipated to be paid by the person renting the space or the people parking their cars? Because I, well, I recognize this is for-profit groups. It's a lot of community members that attend these. So I'm just wondering if the money we generate is worth maybe the hard feelings?
I think that our expectation was that it would be something that would be paid for by the user in advance. So if the user says, I'm going to need 100 parking spaces, then they'd pay $100, $10 a space before they got their permit and then they get their permit to use the parking.
And to understand this, this isn't the, if they're using the auditorium or something, they're using our spaces, this is fine. We had a, an outside agency who was looking just to use our parking lot for parking for a private event and they were going to do a shuttle service from here.
That's not someone using.
No, it's not. Yeah, this is strictly for someone who just wants to use it as a parking lot over a weekend in which we have nothing going on.
That makes more sense.
Yes. If you're a group using the auditorium, you get free parking. That's a part of it.
That makes more sense.
I mean, we didn't even think of it until just a couple of weeks ago when we were approached by a private company saying, we're running an event and we'd like to use your place for parking and shuttle people back and forth. So who'd have thunk it?
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. On the building, actually I have two. On the building use fees, are there any provisions for replacement of equipment in the auditorium? I'm thinking of the headsets and things that are delicate and valuable and if for any reason a group comes in and uses those things and they've been broken, are they required somewhere to replace those things? somewhere to replace those things?
Yeah, if we know that they broke something or lost something, they do, they get billed for that, and they do pay us. And we've been pretty good about that. Unfortunately, sometimes somebody doesn't know someone's missing for two months, and then it becomes an issue. Nothing really big has happened, you know, maybe a wireless mic here or there. I do have in the budget $5,000 for supplies and materials for the auditorium. We've had to replace the gels and things of that nature. That's just through normal use and wear and tear. But if we do notice that, you know, they had an event, and not everything came back, then we do charge the group for that missing piece of equipment.
Okay. But there's no specific inventory that's taken after an event to make sure that we're...
No, not specifically, no. It's usually like Sheldon will check the next day, but, you know, sometimes you might forget to do it, and it's not till the next time someone uses the space, then they go, "Oh, where is this?"
It hasn't been a big problem.
No, really hasn't. And one time when we thought we lost them, we found a teacher had them. Just forgot to put them back in his place, and they're back, they're fine, they're there.
All right, good. And then my other question was about the capital project. The PowerPoint that you included in our packets is dated from '03. Are we sure that these things are all still current?
Nothing's changed. Oh, nothing's changed. It's still the same old system. Hasn't changed at whatsoever.
All right, good, thanks.
Nobody's using it much these days.
No, these days.
Well, no, they're not updating it.
They're not using it.
See, High Park has a year coming up.
They had their own, I think.
Sure, I had them...
Yeah, I think they already had their own.
Oh, that's right. Who did I say? Across the rivers.
New Polk has one.
Yes, that's it. New Polk has one.
Okay, any other questions?
I'll just add that the changes to the fee schedule are primarily for for-profit or out-of-town groups that are going to use our facilities, not for local not-for-profits that use a facility regularly. So, you know, that should...
That's important.
Only any figures that are in the community, so.
All right, so move on to the next report, which is...
Allison. Allison. That's me. First, we just went through some outstanding things we had from last year. One of those was, came from the audit report about the possible need for policy on reporting non-seasons. Basically, we should go for Audit Committee to determine if they want policy, if there's a need for this policy, and if they add that to their committee, and then if they need a policy on that, it would come back to policy after that. The next thing we talked about was possible policy or statement about professional development, and the committee basically wanted the full board to weigh in on that. Obviously, professional development is something that this board has always been in support of, so we're looking for everyone to kind of weigh in on that. So if anyone wants to do that now, we can take a few minutes to talk about that, if anyone had anything.
Well, I did notice that Laura sent us a link to a presentation, which honestly, I was running out of the house, so I didn't get a chance to look at it. So I would appreciate the opportunity to review possible examples of this before we make a decision. I hope we don't have to make a decision tonight.
No, we don't. No. Definitely. So, Laura?
And I will say, that PowerPoint, I just, I really did just find as I was sitting at the soccer field, because my name was in this. But I did note that there is some mention in that PowerPoint that New York State requires some policy on professional development.
Oh, we require...
So, and it's a 9,700 series, and we don't go that far for personnel. But that's in the PowerPoint, and the legal references there, too, so that might be helpful. But, you know, on the face of it, I think it would be a nice way to sort of institutionalize the idea that we want to provide support and resources to our teachers and staff members for development.
Okay. Any questions, comments, policy? Okay.
One more, one more thing I want to highlight, sorry. When we started looking at continuing our review of policies, the last policy we looked at was minimum class size. This was also something we wanted to kind of look at with the full board. The current policy has a minimum class size of 12 students. It's a flexible policy that allows, if we have less than that, that the board, usually we get this in the summer, requests to go under that number. And it's kind of been our practice, at least for the last several years, you know, to do that when we're asked to do that. So the question kind of came up, you know, should we be looking at changing this number? Should we, to come in line with more our practice of having less, or should we leave it as a more flexible policy and take it case by case, depending on what comes up?
Derek?
It seems to me that it's worked just being flexible. I mean, 12 seems to be a comfortable number, that if it's lower than that, to have us review it. So I don't see any reason to change it because it seems useful to have the board take an opportunity to review classes that are smaller than that. Over the years, they're having questions about the necessity of it or not, so it's a useful opportunity for us to discuss that. But, you know, so I'm hopeful the policy is a standard.
Okay. Rick, Derek, hand up.
I agree. I think that from my own experience, I've found that there are times where a nine-person class is a very, not only a valuable class, but a needed class for individuals, for instance, to graduate, what have you. I agree with you 100%. It gives us an opportunity to review those circumstances and not tie ourselves into something where we might have to turn around and have two readings of a policy just to change a policy kind of thing. I'm happy with flexibility.
Laura?
I agree. I think if we adjust the number down, then it doesn't red-flag courses that seem to be lagging, but it will if we keep the number, you know, at 12.
All right, so I think we have our answer there. All right, move on to good news.
Madagascar Day on Friday was spectacular. I was only here for a very short period of time, but I saw the Zara Aneu presentation with Rick in the very beginning. I could only stay for part of it, but those actors are really just incredible human beings, and they were getting the kids all jazzed up about thinking about their lives compared to these children in Africa. It was really quite remarkable. And, you know, I sent out a personal thank you to John and Henry Frischkenneth, but it was really a remarkable day, and I applaud them. It was great.
Yeah, I wasn't able to be there, but I think we all, you know, the sunshine comes first. The foundation is helping to fund some of the people who are here. I sent out a thank you to Henry and many of the teachers who had participated in Frischkenneth, and, you know, I don't think everyone was privy to this, but then there were a whole other series of thank yous from people who participated from the organization, if you seem to say it properly, the...
Zara Aneu.
You know, people saying things, just to share, "It's our pleasure to be part of it. Such a heartfelt and immense effort to bridge these two communities. Proud, proud, proud." I echo that sentiment. How amazing to see an entire community mobilize with the goal of sharing life. Thank you for choosing to include us. We're excited to see where it will go next. One of our own teachers commenting on how fantastic, how excited the kids were on Monday or today, and talking about what they learned and how much they brought to that day from what they had previously learned, that they knew so much about Madagascar, were so excited. It was very inspirational, both the science piece and the arts piece. So all these emails were being exchanged from all kinds of participants, saying what a fantastic day it was. So really, just, you know, kudos to everyone who made that happen. And I know that Henry Frischkenneth provided a lot of leadership at the middle school, and then lots of other people, Terry Kupiak and others have come, you know, really helped to make it happen as well. So it just sounds like it was fabulous, so really well done. We're always trying to promote the positive things, I know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I just want to add, I was appreciative of the fact that members of the board were invited. It was very open and inclusive, all the events that I visited as well, and what a fantastic opportunity for people in a small town like Rhinebeck to learn about the world through the prism of all those disciplines in our sort of sister village, what's kind of emerging as a sister village, it seems, in Madagascar.
Sounds great.
Rick?
You can always tell whether the kids have bought in when you give them an opportunity to ask questions, and they actually have some.
Yeah.
And as it turned out, in the auditorium the other day, they had to stop them from asking questions because they just kept going.
Yeah, that's true.
They were the kind of questions that you would never find on your transparencies and those kind of things, like, "Did you folks have Malagasy names?" And it ended up that not only did they have Malagasy names, but the kids had heard of them, and it turned out that one of the actors actually had tried to pay the people, the Malagasy people, to change his name because he was called Weird Person. He wanted Bright Person.
Wise one, I think.
That really works. That really works. And, you know, I'd intended on just coming in and kind of being obscure, and I ended up actually having no other way to take notes I wrote on my money. So I have some notes on the presentation, you know, things like "Volima means, or "Voluma means, 'Live Till We Meet Again.'" I think that's a great phrase, "Live Till We Meet Again." I may say that as we leave tonight, so it was great.
I have another piece of good news. Many parents attended the junior meeting that's held by Guidance, including myself, and I have to say how incredibly impressed I am by the amount of information and guidance that is given to families in this district for people facing this rather daunting process of helping students to navigate financial aid, seeking colleges, at a really early point in the process, so that people can be mindful about exploring all their options. Really, really well done, and I think it's something everyone in the community should realize is available to all of our students.
Lisa?
The high school open house was last Thursday, and it was terrific. I want to commend the faculty that participated in it. I thought all the presentations were really interesting and absorbing and daunting because of all of the things that the kids and the teachers are dealing with, and impressive in the way that they deal with them.
Okay, and I know, it was mentioned in several of the open houses about our communication goal, and I think a lot of our staff and community members have really bought into the communication, so really happy about that, and hopefully we'll see more people at our Coffee with the Board coming up next week.
Okay. All right, more good news. Okay, move on to old business. Is there any old business? Okay. Public comment? Is another opportunity for public comment?
Hi, I'm Taver fire, again. I just, something really resonated with me with the communications report, I believe it was, and this idea that there's celebration, there will be more opportunities for celebration, whether it's students, teachers, administrators, whatever the case may be. And I was just wondering, you know, typically, if they're, in order to kind of make board meetings not necessarily more interactive, but more of something where people actually look forward to coming because there was something for them to gain from it. I mean, I enjoyed listening just now to all of the good news of things happening at the middle school and high school. Any meeting that I'd been here before, if there was a principal's communication, it was typically kind of something that you might read in a newsletter that might have gone home in a folder, as opposed to, "Here's the initiatives that are going on in our building that we're really excited about," something that may not have made it onto a calendar of events, but something where, you know, I don't know the board's role in encouraging more of sharing with the community about things that they may not, may not make it onto a newsletter, but might, you know, have parents understand that there is excitement and energy and initiative, and, you know, speaking of, you know, teachers working on summer work, they're sharing with each other, they're enjoying that opportunity, but it's kind of like you want to connect that to the people that, you know, they're serving. So, you know, I just basically wanted to make a comment to see what could be done to kind of encourage more of a sharing element, whether it be smart work, right, their presentations they're reading. Because, you know, I always enjoy hearing about, I've definitely heard much more at the middle and high school level about different things that they're doing. I mean, the Madagascar thing sounded wonderful. You know, you want to also understand and know that there's excitement happening at each one of the levels, and then to have parents have an opportunity, when they do attend a board meeting, to actually be part of that excitement and that those are things that are happening in the school. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Beautiful comment. All right.
Can I just say one thing about that, is, you know, I really appreciate your comment because it is one of our goals, and we do need to, you know, we need to consider multiple ways of sharing good news. But one thing we will connect to, just because people are online all the time, is redesigning our website and trying to use the website more effectively to communicate. The good news, although I really appreciate your comment that not necessarily in sort of a calendar or newsletter format, but like in terms of what initiatives there are, that things are a piece of a whole curriculum. It's a really good point, so thanks for sharing that observation.
Other?
Yeah, I've got to go one other. At Your Places tonight is a brochure on Joint School Board Superintendent's Dinner down in Westchester County on November 13th. We've gone to the last couple. I think Lisa and I went to one last year, and a few of us went to one the year before, so there are usually at least a handful of us who go. And this year is a panel discussion on the topic, Leadership Strategies to Reclaim Public Education. The topics are usually pretty good, and the speakers are as well. So if you have an interest, let me know or let Mary Ann know, and we'll register you if you're interested in going.
I think I have an interest. I think I have an interest.
Okay.
I think I can, I think I can.
You said I'm interested.
There is a cost, which is fine. There is a reasonably good rubber chicken dinner to accommodate the speakers, but there also is a cancellation situation. It's all spelled out in here. So give it some thought, let us know. I'm sure we've got at least a little bit of time. Reservation's no later than Wednesday, November 5th, so you have a little bit of time to check your calendars and make sure you can go, and we'll typically, you know, a bunch of us who have gone to carpool it together, because it's a, you know, it's a decent schlep down there, but, so let us know, and we'll, a little trip together if there are enough of you who are interested. Okay, that's my other.
Other, other. Okay, so move on to action. Is there anyone who wishes to pull something from the consensus? Okay. So may I have a motion upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
By Derek.
Second.
By Lisa. All those in favor? Lisa, sir?
I just wanted to acknowledge and thank the Rhinebeck Science Foundation for this and their continued generosity in the district.
Yeah, absolutely.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and substitute non-instructional staff for the 2014-15 school year.
So moved.
By Derek.
Second.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? Lisa, sir?
I just wanted to acknowledge and thank the Rhinebeck Science Foundation for this and their continued generosity in the district.
Yeah, absolutely.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and substitute non-instructional staff for the 2014-15 school year.
So moved.
By Derek.
Second.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the agreement lying between the Red Hook Central School District and the Rhinebeck Central School District for the employment of a shared food services supervisor to oversee and administer their food service programs for their individual districts, resulting in cost savings and generating efficiencies in the delivery of such services.
So moved.
By Derek.
Second.
By Lisa. Any discussion? Lisa?
I recall last year in the Finance Committee, there was some discussion about the need for development of shared services in order... for development of shared services in order to play into the governor's mandate that increase in order to increase tax savings to taxpayers. So will this help us along the road to that?
It helps us towards it. There's still a big way to get to that number that we need to, but this definitely helps towards that. So, yeah, this definitely is going to save us at least $30,000 a year at least, at a minimum. So that's a good thing, and that's what this, you know, sharing services with other districts is about, so. And we're looking at a target figure of approximately what?
$250,000.
For shared services?
No, just we need to come up with savings of $250,000.
Okay, thank you.
Still don't have guidelines yet for this. Still waiting for them.
Any others in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the budget development calendar and timelines for the 2015-16 budget.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. Discussion. Laura?
I just wanted to point out that the dates, the discussion of budget under development are all of 2013-14, so we might want to update those to...
Oh, oh.
Update them to 2015-16.
I see, I see. I made sure the dates were all right. So we're here, okay, I got you.
And I was wondering if it is appropriate to include, the communications committee last year spoke about publishing information regarding board service in advance of the deadline to get petitions in.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if that's appropriate to include with this, or if we should just keep it in the communications committee.
I was just going to say that although the two processes do run in tandem with each other, that this is really for a different purpose than that, so I think, I raised it, so I obviously think that that's something that we should keep in the forefront, but I also think it's probably not for, I guess.
Okay.
Well, just to highlight again, so it seemed, Joe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, like the issue is that we have to adopt the budget on April, this calendar says April 14th, but I think that, my recollection is that April 21st is actually the deadline for the state. We just don't have a...
It's actually a couple days past that, actually. We just don't have a meeting scheduled.
Right.
We could do the 21st. We believe that's when the BOSI's budget adoption is going to be. Typically, it's on that third Tuesday of the month there, so.
So there's that, so like we maybe need to vote on BOSI's April 21st anyway, and depending on how our own budget type, like development goes, that would be available to us to meet and adopt with them. Just so people would see the 14, it doesn't, because we've had the other years where it's like, that's our calendar, but in fact, if we need another week, if we want another week, we're just, right, I think we want to let everyone know that it's just kind of...
We're likely to have a special meeting on the 21st to approve the BOSI's budget, so we could actually do that.
That would be the last opportunity.
Okay. All right, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the 2014-15 CLS before-school enrichment program instructors.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa.
I just want to say that it's great to see so many enrichment opportunities, some of them have been around for years and some of them are new ones.
Yeah.
Quite a lot of opportunities for elementary children.
Along that line, I'd like to say how thrilled I am to see that Mrs. West is bringing Shakespeare back.
Okay, any others? All right, all those in favor? So everyone except me, and then I'll be standing. Okay. And may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to authorize the president of the Board of Education to sign an employment-related agreement with employee number 1832 dated September 30th, 2014, as presented to the board at this meeting. A copy of said resolution shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of additional advisors for the Rhinebeck High School for the 2014-15 school year, see attached.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. Discussion. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the revised 2014-15 school tax bills totaling $6,767.32 reduction adjustments and to make appropriate refunds to the drop area owner.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. Discussion. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the grant of $9,035.46 from the funds requirement to cross fund at the community foundations of the Hudson Valley in support of the 2014 high school across team season.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. And we'd like to thank very much the friends of Rhinebeck Across for their donation. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the donation of two copies of Walter Rosenblond photographs from Rhinebeck High School from Nina Rosenblond, Dennis Watlington, and Caroline Phipps.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa.
Yeah, I just am really impressed, you know, it was a nice collaboration with the High School Diversity Club that brought a documentary about the hospital at Ground Zero that was shown on September 11th, and then that the documentary filmmakers are donating these books of photography to the school. Obviously, an eminent photographer photographed on D-Day and the liberation of fat cow. Those are really valuable resource for our school, and I appreciate that the diversity club, you know, is working with this group. She also, in the donation letter, suggests another opportunity for the diversity club to work with these filmmakers, so I just want to congratulate the diversity club and thank the donation.
Okay. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to modify district's building use fee schedule as attached, effective for all building use requests received after October 14th, 2014.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the 2015-16 memorandum of understanding with the county of Duchess and the Duchess County Department of Health concerning the use of school facilities for mass communication or meditation.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion to approve the 2014 superintendent's administration of schools.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. Okay. Well, Lisa, Laura.
I think this is a, this is a great first run. I'd like to ask Joe, there, for the first goal, we've got a lot about digital communications. I'm wondering if there's any way we can incorporate personal communications, that face-to-face time, the one-to-one time. And I don't, you know, digital is great and it's immediate and it's what people crave, but I sometimes wonder if there's a way that we can promote sort of personal one-to-one conversation also between parents and teachers.
Sure, if that's what the board wants to see in that list of goals.
I'd leave it to my colleagues to discuss. I just stir the pot.
Okay, anyone else?
I mean, well, would you...
I was just, just to clarify, you mean more personal, like Joe himself, or just encouraging, like?
I think encouraging the more personal approach in the, you know, our communications goal is to facilitate respectful communications among members of Rhinebeck School community, particularly between parents and teachers, and that can all be done in an email, but sometimes email falls a little flat, and so in encouraging our staff and faculty to speak directly with parents, encourage that kind of communication. It might go a long way.
Well, I thought I had included that in 1.2.
Yeah.
But if the board wants more than that...
Oh, sorry, okay. Yeah, it does seem that that is...
I tried to balance the digital with the, with the personal there.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the first reading, consideration of applications to board policies, 3030, regulation dissemination, 4010, stipulations of instructional staff and materials, 4200, curriculum and program development, and 4322 programs for the gift to this town.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
Deirdre?
Yeah, so I have a question that mine is similar to sort of what Rick had pointed out in an email on 4200. I, I think first off, that first, the whole first paragraph and the changes point to something I've noted before, which is that the state of New York has gone from asking school districts to have collaborative approaches to curriculum and program development to not wanting school districts to have collaborative approaches to curriculum and program development. So I guess though, I assume that because we haven't done, you know, we haven't involved students or the community in curriculum program development, that's why we're taking this out. Our building-level planning teams aren't serving the function of curriculum development, so I see that that's just reflecting the alley. But I think that the first sentence doesn't belong there then because it doesn't, it's not supported by the next sentences, right? So that, it just confused me because it says that we support a collaborative approach to curriculum program development, but then in fact, what we're doing is taking out the piece of the policy that talks about that collaborative approach. So from my standpoint, it just would make more sense to say, you know, the board and the superintendent are responsible for the development of curriculum, program, curriculum and programs that meet New York State's learning standards and school district community needs.
As long as CDEP is operating, isn't that still a vestige of this more collaborative method of thinking about curriculum? I recognize that, you know, we're kind of in a period of transition toward the Curriculum Governance Council and what that emerges to become, we can't yet foresee, right? But I share this concern about, I mean, if we completely lose all of this language, it seems as if the first sentence won't make sense any longer, so what do we do with that?
Let's see who's handling it.
Well, I do think that, you know, maybe if we don't strike the majority of that second sentence, because building principals and teachers are an integral part of curriculum development, as we learned from Marvin in curriculum committee, so maybe it's just the students. And you do have community members in the CDEP committee, so maybe it's just a matter of excluding the students in that sentence.
Lisa?
Diane?
Go ahead.
Okay. I think that when we, the policy committee looked at this policy, our thinking was not that we wanted the policy to change to exclude anybody from curriculum development. The point of making the change was to avoid having the district be bound to include particular groups of constituents in curriculum development if that didn't make sense in a particular type of curriculum being developed. I mean, I think that in some respects, we as a board have to defer to the administration and the teachers who know how to develop curriculum, and, you know, we can't really tell them how they should be developing it. But I also think that Deirdre is correct that the first sentence of this policy doesn't really, it just sort of hangs out there with the change that we've recommended. So I think that I would second her suggestion that we strike that sentence with the understanding that, you know, if the administration believes that in particular curriculum areas, more people than the typical, you know, the usual suspects should be included, then it's got the ability to do so. You know, the policies, the point of the policy review, I think, maybe my colleagues will differ with me, but for me, the point of the policy review is to make sure that the policies that we have conform with the law, that they conform with our practice, and that they promote the values that we care about. So here, clearly, this policy didn't conform with the practice of the district because it wasn't the regular practice of the district to, for the superintendent to ensure that all of these people participated. But I think the way the policy as a whole is written is not to exclude anybody from the ability to participate if the administration and the teachers think that's the appropriate way to go. You know, I just want to say one more thing, and that is that people think of policies as kind of like rules, you have to do this or you can't do that, the policy says that. Sometimes policies are prescriptive like that. But some of them are just sort of, you know, like, these are the things that we would like to see, and the administration has to make the decision in collaboration with whoever the appropriate collaborators are to make sure that our vision is accomplished. So I think this is one of those policies where we say this is what we'd like to see and please go and do it.
Diane?
Yes, I would say that I don't have a problem with the first sentence because supporting a collaborative approach, I mean, you know, we hope that Marvin is in his office writing curriculum, that he's working collaboratively with the staff, and I think that that says that, that, you know, that we hope that it's being done that way, and if they need to bring someone else in to help write curriculum, that they're doing that, however they're working on that. I think it's just taking out the parts that, you know, it's not our practice to do.
Well, I think as we've just seen with their curriculum committee meeting last time, and we congratulated them tonight, the, first off, the reality is that it's very difficult in this circumstance, the circumstance of education today, to have the public, or the students for that matter, actively involved in writing curriculum. It's, it's difficult, as we've seen, we had hernia-sized bags of stuff in front of us that Marvin explained and we got to see. And we talked tonight, you know, you did a nice job in talking tonight about how the teachers themselves don't just kowtow to the state's standards, but write the curriculum based on a reflection of the community. I think they're part of the collaboration too, so I could live without the first sentence, but I think Diane's made a good point that that's collaboration. So.
Okay.
Well, yeah, so I disagree. I mean, I think if we're going to say that we support collaborative approach, then we should specify what that means. I mean, the point is to explicate, I think, I mean, some kind of vision, so what does that mean? And what does it mean? What statement do we say? We're removing only students from that? And so it's worth, I think it's worth giving additional thought to. I mean, it's also true that curriculum development doesn't happen with students, but sometimes program development does. Ed Davenport does include students when he's considering extra, you know, classes that are electives, for example. He does that, and I think that's, you know, if we want to, if we want, the question is, do we want to specify that we want that inclusiveness of all those different stakeholders? So why take that out if we want collaboration? Why not leave it in, the sentence? Or if we don't want collaboration, and that's, or we don't want this policy to talk about collaboration, doesn't mean we don't want collaboration. If we don't want the policy to reference collaboration, then, then just take... Or if we don't want collaboration, and that's, or we don't want this policy to talk about collaboration, doesn't mean we don't want collaboration. If we don't want the policy to reference collaboration, then, then just take it out. Because, so just, it just seems like odd to leaving the collaboration piece, but take out who we're supposed to be collaborating with. And so the question is, what do we want, you know? And I guess I would say, you know, it's certainly clean to just take out collaboration and say who's responsible, which is what it then becomes, is who's responsible, the superintendent's responsible, and, and just keep it simple. But if we want collaboration, then maybe just keep it in, and maybe, you know, try to distinguish between curriculum and program development. Because the times in program development we do reach students are important. And I think too often, when we're talking about a lot of issues around this table, we actually don't ever include students. We don't. Principals do, I think, when they're doing various things, but we don't. And I would just really hate to kind of take students and some measure of their own, like, ability to impact their program out of the mix. So I would just, I guess I would, my preference would be to throw back the policy and just consider some of the comments around the table and redo it.
Who's first?
Well, I, I'll just say that I was just going to suggest that maybe the Policy Committee discuss this a little more in light of the comments that we've had this evening, and that this policy, you know, be reconsidered at the next meeting.
Deirdre?
Can I just add that if, I mean, we are being specific about those who are involved in writing curriculum. Should the Director of Curriculum be mentioned, or like if we're actually mentioning all of the people who are involved? I, I don't know. It's just something else to think about.
All right. So I would suggest that we send 4200 back to the policy and move on from there, and hopefully the time is ready for second reading. We'll have some further revision.
So we should probably table the first reading on that particular policy.
So may I have a motion to table the first reading of the policy 4200?
I so moved?
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. All those in favor of tablening policy 4200? Okay, that's unanimous. That motion passes. So I call for a vote on the remaining part of motion 6.15.
All those in favor?
No, sorry.
Okay. That portion of the motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of teacher Gina Genter effective February 13, 2015.
So moved?
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the coaching staff for the 2014-15 school year. Boys basketball, modified Mark Bird, $2,487. Girls basketball varsity, Aaron Doyle, $4,436.
So moved?
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. Diane?
Joe, I'm just wondering if you, Aaron Doyle's not a teacher here. I'm just wondering if you can just update the public for us on where we got Aaron from, or if she's...
Well, she's a former student. She's an alum, which isn't necessarily a reason to hire somebody, but if you're looking for some background. She has coached for us over the years. She was one of two applicants for the position initially, and Mark Bird, for personal reasons, had requested to, to move to boys' modified basketball. So she was a qualified candidate that Steve Boucher and Ed Davenport had already interviewed her and would have been, and in fact, is now our candidate of, of choice, absent Mark's interest and ability to continue with the position he was originally appointed to.
Thank you.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept limited donations to the Rhinebeck PTSO in a total amount of $16,787.65 as stipulated.
So moved?
By Deirdre. Second.
By Lisa.
I just want to thank the PTSO for the generous donation and all the programs it's going to provide.
Okay. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Gideon Moore as a part-time, long-term substitute business social studies teacher effective September 2nd, 2014.
So moved?
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. I have a motion to, to move it to executive session for the purpose of discussion of the appointment of this year as a particular person.
So moved?
By Deirdre. Second.
By Lisa. That's unanimous. That motion passes.